Council, it is six o'clock. We will call the Sartell City Council meeting to order. Please rise for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the God for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Council of note, uh, council member Elmus and council member Smith are absent for tonight. Uh, just be the three of us, so looking for the agenda review and adoption, looking for a motion on the agenda.
I'll move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Open forum, public comment. We have one registered. Uh, Mr. Peter Wilson, it is your turn at the podium. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, thank you very much. Peter Wilson, Sartell, Minnesota. I want to talk actually on three things. Registered one. Um, first thing has to do with, uh, political yard signs. Um, I don't have any up now. I do have, uh, my usually good ones, which are, uh, election integrity. Uh, I oppose slavery, then that's up in my yard, along with support your local police. That's always there. So what isn't allowed, even though we moved the election schedule up, is political campaign signs. Um, the, I thought, I could be wrong, but it's, what is it? The twenty-eighth of June maybe is when we can put those up. Um, yet people are then voting then, or very close. So the value of the signs is somewhat diminished, either modestly or, or consequentially, I don't know. Um, again, I'm bringing this up. I think that's more of a state law, but you might comply. I'm not sure if you're required to. I'm making if that you are not required to, and I don't know who could require you, I recommend you change that. Uh, it, the, when they changed these dates, they did not take anything into account, including the cost, which went up by about three to four times running the elections by the counties. But of course, money isn't that important to some people. Um, next thing is I request and recommend, while it is still somewhat fresh in people's minds, the bringing in anyone or everyone who came at it to Sartell, and I'm not sure that they did, but I'm fairly confident they did in most of the areas, uh, regarding the COVID, um, actions. Masking, um, all the various things and the consequences. Uh, I'd like to see them brought up and asked questions. After something happens, that's the time to question whether, okay, was it good or bad, since the shots don't reduce problems and they don't stop, uh, transmission of issues or do anything else other than make drug companies wealthy. I think it's wise to bring it up. This came about because of the, uh, on, uh, Sunday, it's a traditional Catholic church I attend in town. Uh, the, a lady mentioned that she was not given full employment capacity if she took, went to work for a company, and I didn't realize it was still there. Lastly, I will be, um, starting some, uh, door-to-door, door hanging. And, and this has to do with sustainability goals that exist at the city of Sartell, at all cities, at all the counties, or most counties, not all totally. Some have gotten out of them. But the, these again are United Nations things that I greatly detest and don't want our freedom taken away by. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council, next on the agenda is the approval of city council minutes. We have May twenty-eighth and June sixth. I'll take a motion on those.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Uh, consistent agenda, we have items A through H. Take a motion on those or poll any that, uh, someone desires.
I'll make a motion to approve A through H.
We have a motion to approve A through H. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry. Public hearings, we have, uh, one public hearing tonight, and I will kick it over to Carrie.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We have, um, the item rezone and variance submitted by Triple T Housing LLC. We will do the rezone and variance separate, having two public hearings in total. Um, I will go first through the rezone, and I just wanted to let you know that it is a simple majority of all members, so we would need for this to pass a three-zero vote because two people aren't out today for this meeting. So, just so you're aware of that. Um, so this was submitted by Triple T Housing, like I said, and they're proposing to rezone the property that is identified there in front of you from B two general business district to R three multifamily residential district for the proposed forty-eight unit apartment complex. I did include the site plan in your packet, and I also printed out for in front of you as well. This request is consistent with the surrounding area, as you can see immediately to the east or right in front of you. We did rezone that property back in twenty-twenty-one from B two to R three to accommodate, uh, apartment development as well. Um, although if you look at, Rob, if you could go to the next slide, if we look at our future land use, you can see in the blue there that is indicated our town square district. Um, this was a result from our twenty-sixteen comprehensive plan that we adopted. However, since the adoption of that plan, no properties have actually taken on that zoning district for town square, and we do not utilize it nor plan to utilize it as, um, land uses have changed since then, and most likely we are going to restructure where our town square will be and pro- most likely utilize our mill district, um, as some of our town square or, uh, centralized business district. Um, so if you look at that, you can also see that there were similar properties that were rezoned, that were indicated and directed to be the town square, which you can see there have, um, apartment complexes on it. Our G I system needs, needs to be updated, hopefully this year to reflect the newer developments, but similar requests have been made for apartment complexes, which this would require. Um, city staff is also aware that we are approaching about ten years with our comprehensive plan, so we'll most likely have to look at, um, updating that to accommodate what has changed since then. Um, a side note that the rezone request, if you look within the ordinance, the legal description is actually stating a portion of Outlet A, so this Outlet A is what you're seeing shown here. Um, it's just a portion of that. We still have to go through the final plat process, um, which the applicant is working with the current property owner to get that solidified before they actually begin construction of this property. So that's why you see, um, that it says a portion of Outlet A, when that's platted, it'll be a lot one, block one in that legal description. Um, as well, and then the remainder, Rob, if you go back to the first slide, will stay B two, uh, general business district, and then R three, kind of right where that arrow begins is where this project, um, will begin as well. So with that, um, I will request that we open the public hearing, hear from the public that's here and hear their thoughts and statements, and then I will take any questions that you have directed towards me from a city and land use perspective, and I also have a representative from the applicant to answer any specific questions regarding um, their application, why they're applying for it, and some of those dynamics as well.
Council will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify, please step to the podium. Second call, anyone wishing to testify on the rezone, please step to the podium. Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Council, what questions do you have on the rezone? We'll take that first.
So Carrie, you had mentioned, um, with the company involved, um, they, they have done similar projects as to what the scope is, correct?
Correct. Um, they are very familiar, and I didn't state that within my initial, um, overview of this project, but the applicant is, um, submitting this to the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency for, um, funding as well, so they have to meet certain requirements for that application scoring, so they are familiar with this process and familiar with developments, um, similar to this. I believe they have one right now that's going to start in Wake Park that's similar to this, um, project, but they also have other projects actually in Sartell. Um, as well, that's more of a single-family based, but same aspects that they have to adhere to.
And there, it's my understanding that the other apartment complexes in the area, um, there's no other, let me start up there. There's no other apartments in that same area with that same definition, correct?
Correct. Those are, um, market rate, uh, apartment complexes, so their rates are obviously depending on the market and fluctuate based upon that, not income-based.
And can you better define, um, as being part of M F A H A, it's quote-unquote, low income, medium income, and what that all entails?
Yeah, I can go into that. I know Megan is far more versed in that, and I think she can answer some of those questions. Um, I can save that one for her to answer when she comes up here. I'll take any other questions directed towards me, and she'll get into the income levels and ratios.
Looks like we're good.
Okay, and I did just want to note that Planning Commission did, uh, recommend to approve this rezone four to zero with one absent on June third. Just give me one second here. I'm going to talk about affordable housing. I just want to make sure I have the right definitions here. Um, okay. So, uh, the building will be forty-eight units. Um, it'll be a mix of one, two, three, and four-bedroom. Apartment homes will apply to Minnesota Housing Finance Agency in July of this year. Um, if awarded, that award would be announced in December. It's a competitive process, so, um, part of that competitiveness is, um, funding, um, you know, that's local, so we've, I've been working with the Stearns County H R A to secure some, um, housing choice vouchers, which give us additional points. Uh, this site is right next to, or very near, a bus stop, so that's an important feature. Um, and then we'll be incorporating, um, energy efficiencies, so we'll be doing, uh, passive house design, or F E S design, so it'll be one of, we'll be building one of the first passive house projects that's funded by Minnesota Housing in either Wake Park or Rockford. They're both moving forward, and it's a race to see which one, um, moves forward first. And this will be, um, would be one that would follow right after that. Uh, so it's really exciting to, um, bring passive house design, which is, um, basically reducing energy use for the residents and, um, the building itself, and then creating healthy, long-term living environments. Um, as far as income goes, all units will be restricted to sixty percent area median income and lower. And I was, as, I just wanted to look this up to give you an idea of what that number was. So for a family of four in Stearns County right now, that's, um, just under fifty-nine thousand dollars annually. Um, and that will be all income, um, verified through third-party, um, sources, as well as our, uh, criminal and credit, um, reports are also verified for anyone over the age of eighteen or older. Um, the affordability will be for fifty years on this community, and that will be recorded with the, um, county recorder's office, so even if it were to change hands, the affordability requirements would still remain. And I'm happy to answer any other questions about the project or the design.
Council, any other questions? Great, thank you.
Yeah, um, I guess, can I add one more thing? We do have an operating property nearby that opened just within the last couple of years of very, it's same forty-eight units in, um, Saint Joseph. It's, um, behind, um, like, near the National Guard area, um, right there. So for reference, um, we would be looking at something very similar to that.
Thank you. Um, Carrie, one question on the rezone, and I think I saw it in some emails, uh, today, but, um, should we vote to approve the rezone and variance? And it doesn't get funded, or it doesn't build out, what is that timeline where it would revert back to, or, or maybe not even change from B two, but?
Yeah, good question, and, um, when I spoke with the applicant, I asked if there would be any, any sort of contingency-type motion that if we would go through that process, if, if that would be wanted or desired. So if they apply for this and do not get awarded in this year, they plan to reapply, um, and sometimes that takes a second application to get that award, so basically, this would all be just waiting on that, and if they get awarded, then they'd work with their purchase agreement and the current property owner, and then get that final plat, and then we'd record everything then, so until then, nothing would be recorded and official until they move forward. And if it doesn't move forward, the rezone is a rezone, and I understand, but it's very specific to also the variance, and it's unique, and the variance, unless you submitted the exact same project with the same requirements, um, and funding allocations, it won't be able to be used, so it would, it's unique to this property or project.
Council, any other questions on the rezone, um, or variance, I guess we can, since we don't have much on the rezone?
I don't have any question. Do you want comments now to wait until?
Yeah.
Um, I, I do have concerns about changing, uh, rezoning on the area, um, reasons being, I, I feel like as we know, that apartments, um, keep pushing westward there, um, and I feel like the location of this, um, really leaves no other result than apartments coming all the way, um, to essentially the back of the Coburns area. Right now, with it being zoned town square, I understand that, um, it doesn't seem like the likely, um, option. But just, like I said, the location, um, and when we talk about apartments, obviously it's a hot topic, and where we want them and being logical, um, where we put those, um, I just, I just have concerns that, that come up, uh, with this location and, and the result, um, that I will have.
Yeah, I would echo that as well, um, and that there is still property available, um, within our multifamily. And so it's, at some point, uh, we as council have to draw the line of, until that fills up, we won't, um, approve any others, but I also recognize the need for, this type of housing in our community, uh, where many of the others around it are market rate. And that market rate is rather high, in my opinion, but um, one other follow-up question I did have, and, and I understand that what's been presented to us isn't, uh, preliminary or, or final. Um, but also the language says that, hey, should they present that, and it's generally in line? I guess my question is more on public safety side, um, forty-eight units. What I see is a one access in, one access out, is that just, uh, because it's so preliminary, or?
Yeah, we haven't, and they haven't went through full site plan submitted, so we'd have to evaluate turnaround access, um, within there, since there is a one-way in, we wouldn't allow access, I would assume, off of Roberts there, so we'd have to work with them on ensuring that we have proper fire turnaround access, um, during s- the site plan submitted.
Absolutely fair. I just didn't want it coming back at some point to say that it generally meets what was already presented, so.
Yeah. Good question, and outside, I'll get into that, um, in the variance, but some of those conditions outlined within the variance state that if it does alter dramatically outside of what we request from the site plan approval process, so like engineering and stormwater and fire access, anything outside of that that is from them that alters it dramatically, we bring back, um, for approval to ensure that we're still meeting what we thought we approved. Um, and also based upon the comments and discussions you've had between, um, you three up there is if we are at a point where we think we need the other two council members present, um, also a recommendation from staff would be that we can have, ho- hold our public hearings table this item till our next council meeting, so we have our full council here present and up for the discussions and comments, um, and that is an option. I just don't want to get into a position where if we would have had our whole entire council present, that they would have changed things just due to, um, needing to meet the requirements of simple majority.
Can you walk us through the, um, other use for this property, being that you're only rezoning a portion of that, or would that be used? Because again, site plan questions are, were brought up, and some of the ones that I would have brought up as well from the site plan perspective, is this just kind of a placeholder for now, or is this is actually the plan?
Um, so the layout and how much property they plan to purchase, it would be almost dead-on there because they're focusing on their purchase agreement with that amount of property. Um, the remaining would stay in an outlot, the northern portion would stay in an outlot. If you go back to when this whole area was preliminary platted multiple years ago, um, it was a mix of what was in the preliminary plat, was a mix of high-density residential that we're seeing there and businesses coinciding together, so it does, um, align with what was preliminary platted, however, it has become more high-density residential than business, but that's kind of what we saw change over the years from when it was preliminary platted.
Yeah, I, for the area perspective, I, I hear what they're saying. I, I have less concern about the area. I think that's an area that, um, you know, this fits in within from my chair. I do worry, however, about this irregular lot and, and using up that space if that other space actually ever gets to become developed, if, if it has an option in the way that this is laid out. I think that's where some of my concerns come from.
It, it, it still leaves a buildable lot, um, whether, um, it's multifamily or business, that it'll stay B two until it'd be rezoned if they would seek that, but it is a buildable lot. We wouldn't allow them to create a lot that's not buildable.
Yeah, I still worry about the irregularity of the shape and some of that stuff of actually getting developed at some point, so.
Council, any other questions on the rezone? If not, I'll look for a motion on the rezone. Is there a motion on the rezone?
Well, I guess from a conversation perspective, she did bring up, do we need the other council members here? I, I'm comfortable with moving forward. I would be willing to make a motion, but I, I've heard other comments from you all, so, but, yeah.
We have a motion. Uh, I'll offer a second, uh, for discussion. I, I also hear the commentary, but at the same time, we as an elected board have to deal with what we have in front of us. Um, and so unfortunately, we have two members that are absent. They were planned absences, but, um, yeah.
And can I comment as well?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Open comment.
From the concerns I mentioned, a couple that you guys mentioned as well, um, I will be voting, um, against the rezone, um, just as Mayor stated, um, we have multifamily areas that, um, can use the development. I feel like there's a better location, and it, um, kind of landlocks, um, the area into in really nothing but more apartments. Um, so that would be.
We have, any other comments?
Mayor question, ma'am. Um, we have an, uh, representative from the applicant, if you'd be willing to let her speak now, or at the end, that's up to you.
Um, council, we find amending our rules to let them speak? Yeah.
Um, I, I would request as an applicant if, um, if this isn't going to be moved forward tonight to table it, if that's a consideration, um, and we'd be happy to meet with anyone. Um, we've looked at all of the various sites that were zoned multifamily, and they are not, they, they don't score competitively enough because they're not close enough to transportation. So we've looked all over the city of Sartell, um, to try to find a site. We think there's a huge demand here for affordable housing. Um, and so I understand the concerns, um, that individuals have, but we would request, um, that it be tabled until more council members are here. Um, at the applicant, you know, when they, when we submit our application, we don't know what the planned absences are going to be, so if that would be allowed, um, if that, if the, if it's going to be turned on tonight, that would be our request.
Thank you. Council, any additional comments?
It's a tough decision. Um, I would be open if we were to table it. Um, I want this to be the voice of council, not me individually, if I'd be the one holding it up. Um, I do want to have further discussion, if that's the case, on to location, um, as I just explained, my, um, concerns as to why. But as Mayor stated, I, I understand there is a need for this type of housing, um, so I don't want it to be shut down based solely off of, um, again, one opinion. I think there is a way we can make it work potentially here, potentially somewhere else, um, but I am open to that, that conversation.
Council member Meyer made the motion, so I would defer to, um, you, if you want to amend it to, uh, table your motion, otherwise we would have to act on the motion.
I'll amend my motion to table this until the next city council meeting. No matter the attendings, I think we need to keep moving forward here, but, um, I, I would amend my motion to table until the next hearing, till we have more council members.
And?
And I'll, I'll second that amended motion.
Can I make a comment?
Further comments?
Um, do we know if it would come to the next meeting or when it would be at?
It, it would have to come to the next meeting just due to timing purposes, um, for the applicant in submitting, um, further funding.
And that one, it'd be a majority vote moves forward.
Yep. And that's what the amended motion states, is that it would come to the next one regardless of attendees. Um, so we have a motion and a second on an amended, uh, motion of tabling the rezone to R three multifamily to be laying it over to the following meeting. Uh, motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor of that amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Um, I'll make a motion to table the variance request until the, uh, following meeting as well, under same conditions?
Mr. Mayor, I posted for the public hearing for that.
Oh, sorry.
So we'd have to host the public hearing for the variance.
I thought that was, uh, fell into this one. Okay. Uh, council, we will open the public hearing now for the variance request.
Thank you, and just for public's knowledge, this is a variance request providing a hundred percent on the onsite surface parking in lieu of the forty percent recovered or underground parking as stated within our ordinance. Uh, Rob, if you go to the full site plan on the third page there, um, you can see that they are showing that all the parking will be in one parking lot, um, no underground parking, no, um, detached parking, um, this is at the request of the applicant. Like you stated, Mayor Fitzom, this will be just a public hearing, and we will table uh, this to the next meeting to coincide with the rezone.
Anyone else wishing to testify on the variance request?
Good evening, Peter Wilson. Um, I don't see a need for this. In visiting with different people, I know in some of the areas where there are more apartment buildings or stack and packs, or whatever terms you want to use, uh, and the long-term effects of that, which are readily apparent in Saint Cloud and Wake Park, I don't see any need to give a variance if it's a poor idea or a mediocre idea. Making any more accommodations to allow it to happen seem, well, like a bad idea. Thank you.
And Mr. Peter Wilson, can you state your address just for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Eleven zero eight Celebration Drive, Sartell, Minnesota, five, six, three, seven, seven.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on the variance request? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on the variance request? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. Uh, council, I'll make a, uh, restate that motion from earlier to, um, hold over the variance request until the following meeting.
I would second.
Motion and a second to table. Any further? Motion and a second to table, any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's tabled, um new business. Maybe we can preempt this.
Yes, I um I would recommend that we also table this to the next meeting to coincide with the rezone and the variance request as this is. Um a bundled approach um for the applicant.
Uh counsel, is there a motion?
Make a motion to table.
Motion to table and uh. That we say in the next meeting?
Yes, all three, yes, for the next meeting.
Is there a second? Motion and a second, any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's tabled as well.
Thank you.
Uh department reports, right on time, fire.
Mayor, members of council in front of you, you have monthly report for fire, uh if you have any questions, be happy to answer that. Since I'm ahead of Brandon here, uh let's see him, beautiful trophy in over there, I just uh like to get ahead of him and just say that uh. My confidence in the city council on hiring Brandon as chief, uh he reiterated that this weekend, Brandon will do anything to make sure that he wins and. Just hats off to you guys, congratulations Brandon and his team.
Thank you, fire, any questions for fire?
I would, I I would just like to say, thanks for all your work this weekend, it's obviously was a great weekend, I know you had a lot to do with that, so.
Engineering.
Mayor, members of council, you have our report, be happy to answer any questions you have, um I would like to highlight that the city was successful in receiving an A T grant. Um for the Heritage Drive Trail design, that last segment, the city had a, already received a three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar. Uh federal grant and is successful in an active transportation grant for another ninety-seven thousand dollars um to help with the city's portion of. Um that cost split, um also wanna highlight that we will be having a neighborhood meeting for the Heritage Drive project this Wednesday from five thirty to six thirty. Here at City Hall, uh other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for engineering?
Can you just give us a brief overview of all the work that's going to be happening this summer, I know it's in your report, but just a quick summary, it looks like there's a ton of projects there. Traffic and all those things, I just would love a a little bit more in depth from from you, so.
Yeah, actually from a full like reconstructing reconstruction perspective, it's gonna be a little bit slower than it has in the past, we've got a number of. Street maintenance pregnant projects, uh mill and overlays and seal coats spread out through um out the entire city. Um one of significant note would be a mill and overlay of the south portion of uh Pinecone Road from Scout Drive south to County Road one twenty. Um and we have some other projects, uh surge tank project at lift station one. Um and then some other reports and studies throughout the city, um also hopefully have ditch thirteen and grizzly lane flood improvement projects. But uh the timing of that project will be dependent on D N R permitting and also easement acquisitions.
Any other questions, comments for engineering? Thank you, uh Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, you have uh the Public Works monthly report for each of the divisions, if you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions for Public Works? Seeing none, thank you.
Nice report, by the way, it's a little more detailed than kind of bills, so I appreciate it.
Uh P D, would you like us, bring us home?
Uh yeah, and despite the good natured raving from the fire chief, it was a really cool cause uh that we did this tug of war for and. Kinda culminated with everything that happened this weekend. Everything went out with the hitch, public safety wise, we had good coverage for our P D staff, fire staff. Uh all the way to the vent at the waters on Sunday, which uh had both P D and fire there, so lots of good partnerships. Um I know a couple of you were involved in the pageant as well, the first Miss Sartell pageant, which uh. I had some involvement in and it was a really cool event for me to uh start to understand what that was all about and. Watch five of our young women in this community put themselves out there and have some courage and uh it was really cool, it was a good weekend, so.
Excellent, any questions, comments for P D? Thank you.
Okay, I would just throw out there, thank you also for all your work this weekend, that was a great weekend and congratulations on one year.
Thank you. Uh city commission updates.
None at this time.
City council committee and miscellaneous business, Alex.
Yeah, I was able to partake in some of the summer fest events, so hats off to everyone and another great year.
Jed? Um I, the only item I had uh would have come from just feedback from the uh open forum today. If we can put out the dates that are allowed for yard signs. Um that was a kinda overarching question that I heard come through on that, um. Guess I wasn't aware there is a certain date, so. Um and then election, those are already posted, the dates of when you, any primary that happens, so. The only thing I would have, um look for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.